So time. You guys knew the second it turned seven o'clock. It was like silent. Are you guys good? We'll go ahead and call the meeting to order. Welcome, everyone. This is the Euclid Township Board of Supervisors June monthly meeting. If you could join me for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance. Thank you. Just a reminder for everyone, tonight's meeting is being recorded and broadcast on our YouTube channel. I'd like to announce that the board met an executive session on June 2nd, 2025 to discuss personnel. Is there a motion for the minutes of the May 12th, 2025 meeting and the June 2nd, 2025 workshop?
So moved.
Is there any board questions or comments? Seeing none, is there any public comment? Seeing none, I'll call the vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. We'll move on to the reports for this evening. First, we have our police report. Chief Alexander.
Thank you and good evening. For the month of May, 2025, the Euclid Township Police Department officers documented 1,072 entries in the Police Department Call Reporting System. During the reporting period, the officers issued 80 traffic citations. They investigated 31 motor vehicle crashes and they arrested 31 individuals. Additionally, for the month of May, the department members conducted two motor carrier details at the weigh station, resulting in 956 commercial motor vehicles being weighed, none of which were found to be overweight. During the detail, the officers also performed 14 inspections, requiring five vehicles and one driver to be placed out of service. During any one of those details, the officers were assisted by members of the Nether Providence Township Police Department, the Upper Trichester Township Police Department, the Easttown Township Police Department. Officer Steven Scott and Officer Matthew Lanty also performed two additional inspections during their normal workdays. Those inspections identified multiple violations. Year-to-date, the officers have entered 5,399 entries into our call reporting system. They've arrested 113 individuals. They've written 575 traffic citations, 220 written warnings. They've investigated 143 motor vehicle crashes and they've put 4,161 trucks over our scales. And additionally, for the month of May, we had one Narcan administration.
Thank you, Chief. Treasurers report.
Good evening. Through the month of May, in our general fund, we have collected just over 41% of our projected revenues and have spent just under 33% of our projected expenditures.
Great, thank you. Public Works report.
Good evening. The Road Department report for the month of May, they tracked down a milling machine for milling and repaving, ordered signs for the Route 100 sign project. They replaced seat tops on Blue Ribbon Way, sinkhole on Evan Drive, dug and repaired two storm inlets on Evan, all asphalt and concrete out to recycling facility, and all equipment was mobilized to Taylor Road for the storm sewer project. So Taylor Road can be repaved this year. Onto the sewer report. The daily average flow to Dara this month was 1,460,377 gallons per day. There were no new sewer connections in the township. We had a total of 4.06 inches of rain. Normal rainfall for May is 4.40. Year-to-date, normal rainfall is 18.30 inches. Actual rainfall for 2025 is 12.3, which is minus 5.95 inches for the year. All the pump stations are operating normal with no issues. The Pine Creek Pump Station was cleaned and pumped out and the Eagleview Wastewater Treatment Plant tank repairs are still ongoing. That's all I have.
Great, thank you. Fire Marshals report.
Yes, the Building Department for the month of May issued 140 permits for construction activities. A total of 126 inspections were conducted, 10 fire inspections were completed, 60 use and occupancy certificates were issued, and the Fire Marshal responded to 21 incidents during working hours and conducted two burning complaint investigations.
Thank you. Lineville Fire Company.
Lineville Fire Company responded to 53 incidents during the month of May. 31 were in Euclid, 11 in Upper Euclid, 2 in West Plaquenil, and 9 in other municipalities for a year-to-date of 299.
Thank you. And is there anyone here from Euclid Ambulance this evening? And I will note, we did receive their report. All right, with that, is there a motion for approval of the reports? So moved. I will second. Is there any board questions or comment? Any public comment? Seeing none, I'll call the vote. All in favor? Aye. Motion passes. I want to back up just a second. I usually do this at the beginning of the meeting. I just wanted to point out our public participation policy before we jump into our business agenda tonight. Our policy is found at the back of the room, and I believe it's on the back of the agenda. But residents and taxpayers of the township who wish to address the board during the public comment period at the end of the public meeting should sign their names to a sign-in sheet, which is provided by the township at the back table. Thank you. Speakers must identify themselves by name and street name. A business or an organization is encouraged to designate one person to present comments on its behalf. The speaker must direct all comments to the Board of Supervisors and not to staff. Each speaker recognized by the board chair will be given three minutes to comment during the public comment period. No official board action will be taken on items presented during the public comment period at the end of the meeting. Items may be referred to township staff and/or the appropriate working group or committee for further research and discussion. Matters addressed publicly to the board will be taken under advisement and either the board will respond to the person raising the issue directly at a later date, or the board will respond to the items during a future public meeting as an agenda item. The board need not engage in discussion on comments offered. While the public has the right to make critical remarks, the public does not have the right to disrupt meetings. In the case of serious disruption, the board will adjourn the meeting or take other such action to resolve the disruption as appropriate under the circumstances. And as I stated already, the meeting is subject to video and audio recording. With that, we'll jump into our business agenda for this evening, and the first thing we have is an award presentation to Sergeant Stephen Saracini. I'm not sure if it'd tap. I think it's on.
Is it on?
Yes.
I don't really need it, but. Okay. Good evening, everyone. I'm Maureen Evans, and I'm the Lieutenant for the Euclid Township Police Department. I would like to start by thanking the Board of Supervisors for their support and providing us with the opportunity this evening to recognize a member of our police department as well as our department as a whole. I work with a group of the best men and women in Chester County law enforcement, and we are no doubt a successful agency due to the exceptional leadership of Chief Scott Alexander and the collaboration of our great officers. Thank you, Chief Alexander, for your guidance and support as you continue to set a constant example of public service and dedication to our police department and the community every day. Your commitment to this profession is and always has been unwavering. Thank you to the members of the Veterans of Foreign War District 9 Henry J. Thomas Memorial Post 845 for including our department in your award program. Welcome to the family and friends of Sergeant Stephen Saracini as well as all meeting attendees. A little bit of background on this award first. In September of 2023, Thomas Smith, the Director of the Veterans of Foreign War District 9, Henry J. Thomas Memorial Post 845, made a personal visit to our police station. Tom honorably served in the United States Navy. He explained that the VFW has a program wherein they recognize members of public service in police, fire, and ambulance via the John Ratko Award. John Ratko was a police officer and also a former VFW commander for the Union Town PA VFW, and this award was established in his honor. The criteria and summary includes recognition of services, whether through quiet dedication or wide publicity, unswerving loyalty to and active performance in the defense, safety, and security of the nation's citizens on a full-time, part-time, or volunteer basis, and dedication to their official duties over a period of years and continuous growth in responsibility and experience which safeguard the community. A nomination letter is required outlining the nominee's background, accomplishment, and any additional facts related to their employment with law enforcement. This is the second year that our department has participated, and the second year that one of our officers has been chosen to receive the award, as Sergeant Maria Madione was recognized in 2024. This year, after careful consideration, Sergeant Stephen Saracini was submitted as our department's nominee. Throughout his tenure with our police department, Sergeant Saracini has consistently demonstrated through his skills and dedication to this job that he absolutely meets the eligibility criteria. Since he was hired in 2012, Sergeant Saracini has always wanted to do the best job possible and proactively sought out ways to hone his skills. He did this not for himself, but for the citizens he serves and his fellow officers. As police officers, we must always have the mindset that the public is deserving of the highest level of service on an everyday basis as well as in their specific times of need. Sergeant Saracini has the mindset of being that police officer he would want if the roles were reversed, and you can't ask for a better expectation than that. Often, police officers are publicly recognized for a single heroic event in their career, stemming from a life-or-death incident or a lengthy investigation, which is very appropriate. However, awards such as the John Ratko Award, in my opinion, are most appreciated because it allows us to honor police officers for the job that they do every single day. And it goes without saying that the job is both rewarding and difficult. Yes, it can be said that this is the profession that we chose, and that you knew that going in. Those are very true statements, because when you decide to become a police officer, we already know what it involves, yet we all have still chosen it, and for that, I am profoundly grateful to you all. I'll now read the letter that was submitted nominating Sergeant Saracini. Greetings, Mr. Flick. I am writing to nominate one of our police officers, Sergeant Stephen F. Saracini, for the John Ratko Award. Sergeant Saracini was hired by our department in a full-time capacity on August 13th, 2012. He started in our patrol division and was promoted to the rank of sergeant in August of 2018. Sergeant Saracini was born and raised in Upper Darby Township, Delaware County. He comes from a law enforcement family, as his grandfather's retired captain with the Upper Darby Police Department, and his father is a retired patrol officer with the Upper Darby Police Department. Sergeant Saracini is a 2004 graduate of West Chester University with a bachelor's degree in criminal justice. Since his hiring, he has taken every opportunity and every appropriate step to become a well-rounded police officer and first-line supervisor for our department. He has many responsibilities within our agency, many of which he initiated on his own and never had to be asked or ordered to do so. Outside of our department, Sergeant Saracini is a member of the West Chester Regional Emergency Response Team. He is the definition of a leader and a team player. He's always willing, excuse me, he has always shown a willingness to ask questions and continually educate himself on the ever-changing laws and procedures as they relate to law enforcement. I'll begin by providing an overview of Sergeant Saracini's professional credentials and his work experience. As stated, he began his career with the Euclid Township Police Department or Patrol Division. He promptly established himself as a reliable patrol officer and employee. In addition to his patrol duties, he expressed an interest in maintaining the police vehicle fleet. He was given the opportunity, and he ran with it. Sergeant Saracini now oversees and manages our entire patrol fleet. He is in charge of ensuring that every vehicle is safely operational and current on all inspections, mechanical maintenance, et cetera. This often requires Sergeant Saracini to handle issues when he is not working, which he does without complaint and has actually insisted upon. Within a few years, he has to become a field training officer for the department's newly hired officers. He is thorough and patient, ensuring the new officers feel welcome, comfortable asking questions, and confident in their own abilities. Progressing forward, he has to become a department instructor and now carries numerous certifications to ensure that our officers and our department are always up to date, mandatory certifications specific to our less lethal tools. He is an Axon Taser Instructor, an Ask Collapsible Baton Instructor, and the Municipal Police Officers Education and Training Commission Mandatory in-Surface Training Controls Tactics Instructor. All of these certifications require him to complete yearly and bi-yearly instructor training of his own, which he then relays to the members of our department. He takes great pride in teaching and training his fellow officers. He goes above and beyond the general curriculum and encourages officers to always maintain a positive mindset and to use proper tactics during life-threatening situations. Sergeant Saracini is not only interested in his own success, he is truly invested in each and every member of our organization. This is evident in his desire to field train new officers, lead officers on a daily basis as a supervisor of a shift, instruct and train so they are able to perform their duties properly, and maintain numerous pieces of equipment and vehicles that are vital to everyday operation of this agency. He is well-rounded, to say the least. Sergeant Saracini knows the importance of community engagement and is always willing to participate in all of our community outreach programs. On countless occasions, he has given of his off-duty time to attend events at schools, within our communities, or to support a fellow officer in one of their own achievements. The community outreach that we do provides our department with the opportunity to engage with the citizens beyond our regular service calls. Sergeant Saracini has always seen the importance of forming and maintaining trusting relationships with the community we serve. He has participated in and been a highlight of our Citizens Police Academy. I mentioned previously that he leads by example and is a team player. To that point, Sergeant Saracini, despite the added responsibilities of being a shift supervisor, also maintains a high level of proactivity in his own patrol duties and is very thorough with all of his assigned tasks. He has been the supervising officer on countless dangerous and high-priority calls, to include shootings, stabbings, assaults, domestic incidents, crimes against children, and the confiscation of guns and drugs. In addition to overseeing those calls and subsequent arrests, he is also diligent with assisting citizens to experience a mental health crisis or other life-altering events. Sergeant Saracini's ability to treat people with dignity and respect has proven to be essential in his position with the Regional Emergency Response Team. In 2020, he completed an interview process and was selected as a member of the hostage negotiation side of operations for that team, and he has excelled in that position. In 2021, Sergeant Saracini was the lead negotiator on an incident that started as a domestic assault and resulted in a several-hour standoff with the subject having a mental health crisis. He negotiated with the subject for almost four hours, and due to his ability to de-escalate and calm the subject, he was safely taken into custody. Sergeant Saracini's personal life are just as fulfilling as his professional life. He and his wife Christina have three children, ages 11, 9, and 4. Become a police officer is a call to service, and Sergeant Saracini extends this call of service to in his personal life as well. He is very active with his family and coaches his children as well as other children year-round in baseball, football, basketball, field hockey, and wrestling. Sergeant Saracini has often expressed how much he loves spending time with his wife, with his children, and with his extended family and friends. He is an asset to our police department as well as the community. For all the reasons I have mentioned, I respectfully request that you consider Sergeant Stephen F. Saracini as the recipient of the 2024 John Ratko Award. Thank you for your time and for including our department in your wonderful program. So now I will have the Chief Sergeant Saracini and Tom Flick come up front. Mr. Flick is the Senior Vice Commander of the Veterans of Foreign War District 9 Henry J. Thomas Memorial Post 845. He honorably served in the United States Air Force and is also a retired police officer with West Chester Borough. So I'll give Tom Flick the Chief Sergeant Saracini. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Okay, we're here to honor Sergeant Stephen Saracini, and it's my great honor and honor for the VFW to recognize our police officers out there so that they get the proper recognition that sometimes they don't get. So we're trying to do a little more to help with that and let you guys know that we do care, we do appreciate, and we do back you completely. So without further ado, I'd like to present you first off with the certificate that we give for the John Ratko Award. Better than the certificate, I have a check for $500. So like to recognize Lieutenant Evans. Every year, she has been submitting a very professional product and recognizing her officers when she takes the extra effort to do it. And I just want everybody to.
You don't want to stay? Of course. Congratulations.
Congrats.
Should put my chair down. Chair down, hold it.
Don't you move, you can now just leave.
Spare, we make it in. People can move wherever they want. All right, thank you, everyone. Always nice to have something happy on our agenda and glad to have the police department in here a couple times a year to acknowledge their efforts, for sure. All right, we'll move along in our business agenda to number two, which is permission to schedule and advertise public hearing regarding cable franchise renewal.
We're seeking permission to advertise a public hearing regarding cable franchise renewal for the township. The hearings pursuant to Section 626 of the Federal Cable Act, which sets forth the process for franchise renewal. Township's current franchise with Verizon is within the industry norm renewal window, and the township is beginning the process of renewing the franchise. The hearing is part of the preliminary portion of the franchise renewal in which we review the cable operator's past performance and identify our future cable-related community needs.
Wonderful. Is there a motion to schedule and advertise a public hearing regarding the cable franchise renewal? So moved. I will second that. Is there any board questions or comments? Seeing none, is there any public comment? With that, I'll call the vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Number three, Ordinance 2025-06, Establishing Speed Limits on Roads in Pickering Creek Industrial Park. Mr. Freed?
Thank you, Madam Chair. So this is an ordinance hearing that we're having tonight on a speed limit, and this relates to setting a speed limit of 25 miles per hour on three roads, Pickering Way between Welshpool Road and Sharp Lane, Welshpool Road between Gordon Drive and Pickering Way, and Phillips Road between Welshpool Road and Pickering Way. We have a number of exhibits as part of this evening's hearing. Board Exhibit 1 is the proposed ordinance, which is number 2025-06. Board Exhibit 2 is the Notice of Hearing to the Daily Local. Board Exhibit 3 is the proof of publication in the Daily Local on May 30th, 2025. And Board Exhibit 4 is the Certificate of Posting. So with that, I will turn it over to see if there is an interest in motion in passing this ordinance and open it to public.
I'll make a motion to approve Ordinance 2025-06, Establishing Speed Limits on Pickering, on the roads in Pickering Creek Industrial Park at 25 miles an hour.
I will second that motion. Is there any board question or comment? Is there any public comment? All right. Seeing none, I'll call the vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes.
All right, with that, we'll close the hearing. Thank you.
Thank you. And moving along to number four, Approval of Cured and Placed Contract for Point Repairs at the Eagleview Wastewater Treatment Plant.
This would approve a Co-Stars contract with Mr. Rehab to proceed with cured-and-placed pipelining at the Eagleview Wastewater Treatment Plant in the amount of $28,352.50. We did consider replacing the pipes altogether, but that cost is nearly twice the price of the pipelining method.
I'll make a motion to approve the cured-and-placed contract for point repairs at Eagleview Wastewater Treatment Plant.
Go ahead and second, is there any board question or comment? Is there any public comment? Seeing none, I'll call the vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Number five, Permission to Advertise Stop Signs for Always Stop at Wharton Boulevard and Rice Boulevard.
We're seeking authorization to advertise the ordinance that would make Wharton Boulevard and Rice Boulevard an always-stop. The intersection's currently a two-way intersection, and by making it always-stop after different traffic engineers have reviewed it, believe that it'll make improvements to both vehicular and pedestrian safety.
I'll make a motion to advertise stop signs for all and always-stop at Wharton and Rice Boulevards.
I'll second. Is there any board question or comment?
Nope.
Seeing none, any public comment? I'll call the vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Number six, Permission to Advertise Ordinance Amending Section 508.11 Governing Town Centers.
Yes, we are specifically requesting permission to advertise the ordinance which governs town centers. This would, what we're proposing is removing one sentence indicating that there will be no more town centers. That was a requirement from the previous Town Center Conditional Use Hearing. The applicant would still need to go through the conditional use process for town centers as well as land development, but at this point, we're looking to hold that hearing for the ordinance July 14th.
We'll make a motion to advertise an ordinance amending Section 508-11 Governing Town Centers.
I will second. Is there any board question or comment?
Nope.
Is there any public comment? Seeing none, I'll call the vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Number seven, we have a list of two resolutions this evening. We will start with number 2025-21, Calvary Chapel of Chester Springs, 217-219-221 Dalin Forge Road, the preliminary final land development plan approval.
Yes, as you're aware, Calvary Chapel had acquired the adjacent tax parcels came in for zoning change for all of the parcels to be planned commercial. Conditional use approval was granted in 2024, which amended the previous conditional use approvals. The applicant's now proposing two phases of construction, comprised of Phase 1, which includes lot consolidation of the three parcels, parking lot improvements, and a 1,353-square-foot maintenance building. Phase 2 includes a building addition of 7,500 square feet, another addition of 5,440 square feet, and a covered patio of 1,193 square feet. The applicant is also requesting a waiver from Section 260-305.2A for the review and approval of preliminary slash final land development plan. The applicant attended the Planning Commission meeting last Wednesday night. There were discussions regarding pedestrian connectivity. There were discussions regarding pedestrian connectivity. They are currently exploring options for additional off-site shared parking and have reached out to Target with no response as of yet. They are still pursuing other properties in the area. Any off-site shared parking does require a special exception hearing in front of the zoning hearing board. The applicant has also submitted a proposal for the sidewalk connection in front of the Dollar Tree to extend to the church property and have agreed to construct that sidewalk as submitted. Additionally, there was discussion about installing a crosswalk from the upper entrance to the Target entrance. Even though the applicant feels that the crosswalk's not really necessary, they are willing to construct the crosswalk with ADA ramps and thermoplastic paint with appropriate signage. Should our traffic engineers feel that signalization's required, the applicant has agreed to provide a fee in lieu at the township's discretion for the construction of that crosswalk. The applicant also indicated at the Planning Commission that they do intend to install solar panels on the roof at the time of the building permit submission, and unless there's any reasonable cause for delay of the installation, they will provide evidence at that time. The Planning Commission did make a motion to recommend the waiver and approval of the preliminary final land development plan pursuant to compliance with all of the township review letters, in addition to the sidewalk construction and the crosswalk as discussed. So if there's any questions, the applicant is here. If not, we're asking that you approve Resolution twenty-two-five-dash-twenty-one approving the expansion of Calvary Chapel.
All right, I'll go ahead and make a motion for the approval of Resolution number twenty-two-five-twenty-one, Calvary Chapel of Chester Springs, for preliminary final land development.
I'll second that.
Is there any board discussion?
Nope.
Is there any public comment? Nope. All right, not seeing any. I will go ahead, call the vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Thank you. Thank you. Nancy for this? Is Nancy up to stay for this?
Yeah.
Okay. All right, we'll go ahead and move on to the second resolution of the evening, number twenty-two-five-twenty-two, for the Love Car Wash at eight fifty North Pottstown Pike, preliminary final land development plan approval.
Yes, the applicant is looking to remove the existing fuel pumps with the existing canopy to remain and make improvements to the site for the existing car wash. The applicant did receive zoning hearing board approval for variances in November twenty-twenty-four to permit a front aired setback of less than fifty feet to allow for the placement of vacuum equipment, to permit less than ten feet of dedicated buffer area, and to permit a planting screen less than five feet at the time of planting. The driveway and parking lot will be restripped to accommodate twenty-five stacking spaces at the car wash and fifteen parking spaces, and the car wash is intended to be open from eight AM to eight PM. There are a handful of waivers that the applicant is requesting for preliminary final plan to allow for the existing condition of South Village Ave and the right-of-way to remain unchanged, to omit the requirements for sidewalks along Village Ave and Route one hundred, to not provide the required street trees, and requiring the applicant to show existing utilities and significant features within a hundred feet of the property, specifically since the site work is changing. The Planning Commission didn't see an issue with recommending the waivers. The applicant did attend the meeting last Wednesday night as well and discussed all of the review letters. They did submit a noise assessment that we are having reviewed by a sound engineer. Signage was also discussed, and a building permit application was submitted and is being reviewed. The permanent signs are compliant, but there's a lot of temporary signs that need to be removed from the site. The Planning Commission did make a motion to recommend approval of all the waivers and approval of the preliminary final land development plan pursuant to all of the review letters. And the applicant has agreed to pay a fee in lieu of construction of the sidewalks and a fee in lieu of additional plantings if necessary. So if you're okay with it, we're requesting approval of Resolution twenty-two-five-dash-twenty-two approving the preliminary final land development for Love Car Wash.
Okay, I'll go ahead and make a motion for approval of Resolution number twenty-two-five-dash-twenty-two for Love Car Wash at eight fifty North Pottstown Pike for the preliminary final land development.
I'll second that.
Is there any board discussion? I just have one quick question about the waiver for not providing the required street trees. What was their hardship about that?
So, if you're familiar with the property, the line, the lanes to get into the car wash, there's a paved area right there that, after discussion at the Planning Commission, we felt that they would overhang into the street. The Montessori school does line up there for pickup, and it's easier for township staff not to have to deal with trees that are within the right-of-way. Similarly, on Route one hundred, PennDOT won't allow it.
Okay. All right, great, thanks. Is there any public comment? All right, seeing none, I'll call the vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. All right, before I read the announcements for this evening, I wanted to go ahead and give Mr. Kegel an opportunity. I want to highlight the announcements for June seventeenth, nineteenth, and the twenty-sixth, where we have announced a Planning Commission meeting for Rockwell Discussion at the Christ First Church. Mr. Kegel?
Thank you. The Euclid Township Planning Commission will be holding a special public meeting to hear about plans being considered by Rockwell Downingtown LLC, also known as Rockwell, for the school district property on Lineville Station Road. These plans include a conditional use plan that Rockwell submitted on February third for office manufacturing and warehouse buildings with associated loading and parking areas, approximately a hundred acres of open space and an auditorium, swimming pool, and nature trail. That plan is currently subject to an indefinite extension on, from the timelines spelled out in the MPC, the municipality's planning code, for holding a hearing. Additionally, a zoning amendment proposal that Rockwell has submitted to establish a planned residential development zoning overlay on the property and a tentative planned residential development plan consisting of approximately five hundred seventy homes, sixty-six affordable apartments, approximately a hundred acres of open space, and an auditorium and nature trail. That plan has not yet been formally submitted. All of those documents that have been submitted to the township were required under the agreement of sale between Rockwell and the school district. Because we know a lot of residents have interest in what may happen with this property, this meeting is really intended to help residents learn more about the details of the submitted plans and give informal feedback that can be used by both the developer, the Planning Commission, as well as the Board of Supervisors and township staff. So the meetings will be held June seventeenth, nineteenth, and if necessary, the twenty-sixth, between six PM and ten PM at First, at, at Christ First Church, ninety-five West Devon Drive, right, right across from the high school. The meetings will also be recorded, and they'll be livestreamed on our YouTube channel, just as most of our other meetings are. In terms of process, there's not going to be any official action taken at these meetings by the Planning Commission. So on the first night, June seventeenth, Rockwell's going to be given time to present on the plans that they're considering. The Township Planning Commission and the Township's consultants will be able to ask questions of Rockwell's about the plans, and we frankly anticipate that the presentation and the questions and, and answers will take the majority of the time allocated on the seventeenth. On the nineteenth, the meeting will then be continued on the nineteenth. Any follow-up presentation and questions and answers will take place, followed by, at that point, we will open it up for public comments. And then we have scheduled June twenty-sixth, but it's only going to be necessary if we're unable to complete the public comment period on, on the nineteenth, and in short order after the meeting on the nineteenth, we'll announce whether the twenty-sixth is necessary or not. As I said, there's not going to be any official action taken by the Planning Commission during any of these meetings. These meetings really are purely informational and to allow for informal feedback to the developer on their plans. All of our usual public comment rules are going to apply. We are going to, we, we, we are asking that, you know, groups try to designate a single spokesperson. We're asking that we don't get a lot of repetitive comments. We're expecting a lot of comments, and rightly so, but we want to, we want to make sure that the process is as efficient as possible and folks, folks can be heard. We are going to establish a special email address, lsr@euclid.com, and that, that email address will accept emails between June twentieth and July first. Those comments will be provided to the Planning Commission members and Rockwell for their consideration in future refinements and decisions of plans. We'll provide an acknowledgement receipt for each email that, that is received. We'll, we'll have the three-minute time limit per person, various things like that, and I just want to stress that no official ash, no official action will be taken at these meetings or on items presented during the public comment period.
Great, thank you. And I wanted to say I appreciate the effort that the staff has put into relocating these meetings to accommodate everyone. I know we've been very vocal about letting the public know that we're interested in their comments, and we're going to do our best to accommodate everyone, if that means a larger venue, additional meeting times. It's summer, we understand everyone as vacations and graduations. We're going through the same thing as everyone else, and we're doing our best to make those accommodations, and certainly, if you cannot make those meetings, please reach out to that email that Mr. Kegel read, which will be available online. And as always, the Board of Supervisors is available for emails and phone calls and cups of coffee and whatever else we can do to make sure that we're hearing what you want to say, so onward. All right, with that, I will refer you to the announcements at the bottom of the agenda. All meetings will be held at the Township Building unless otherwise noted. On June twelfth, the Environmental Advisory Council Workshop Meeting will take place at six PM. Also, on June twelfth, the Historical Commission will be meeting at seven thirty PM at the Cadwalder House. On June fourteenth, we will be celebrating the Happy Days Park opening at eleven AM on-site.
With free ice cream.
With free ice cream. On June nineteenth, in celebration or acknowledgement of Juneteenth, the township offices will be closed. On June twenty-first, we will be holding an e-waste and shredding event from nine AM to twelve PM, with more information available on our website. Planning Commission will be meeting on July second at seven PM. Township offices will be closed in acknowledgement of Independence Day on July fourth. On July seventh, the Board of Supervisors will hold their workshop meeting here at the Township at twelve PM. Also, on July seventh, Community Day will be meeting at six PM. On July tenth, the Historical Commission will be meeting at seven thirty PM at the Cadwalder House, and finally, the Board of Supervisors will meet on July fourteenth at seven PM. And with that, I will open up to public comment this evening, and I have Christopher Engel.
All right. I have two separate questions. The first is, at one of the meetings I attended with Rockwell, they expressed an openness to consider lessening the density of their residential plan if Euclid Township were to purchase. And my question is, have you guys, first, are you aware of that? Secondly, have you talked to Rockwell about that? And third, what was the result of that conversation if it happened?
The township is in continued discussion with Rockwell regarding the possibility of open space purchases.
And when as, when, when we, we as your constituents find out more information about the results of that, those conversations?
I could not put a date on that for you. Like I said, it's an ongoing conversation that the township has been exploring with the developer directly, but certainly would be happy to make an announcement should we have something to say about that.
Great. The second question is with regards to the massive warehouse that's coming along on Happy Days Farm. My question is, does Euclid, what, what are the restrictions, if any, that are placed on the operational hours of use at that facility based on our existing ordinances? And if you can state what those restrictions may be, that would be greatly appreciated.
For the Portman property?
For the Happy Days farm.
That's something I can have the township staff follow up with you directly. That's not something I have directly in front of me that I would want to recite with
I appreciate it.
without error. So I'll have them follow up with you.
Okay, thank you.
Yep, thank you. All right, and that's all I have for public comment this evening. Anything else? If not, I will make a motion to adjourn.
I'll second.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.